Hello everyone and welcome to this year's last minute grass review for AP Biology. In this video, we're going to cover some general tips and pointers for taking the AP Biology test, some commonly questioned content and some important skill review for things that you may need to know on the day of the test. Remember, this is meant as a fast review. It's a cram session. It's definitely not meant as introductory content, but if you need to go back and review any of these concepts, check out some of the resources on my channel. And remember, AP Biology is a trademark registered by the College Board, which is not affiliated with and does not endorse this video. If you want to skip the general format and overview section and go straight into the content, jump to about four minutes in this video and that'll get you started straight away with the biology knowledge. Lastly, I do talk fast, so this is a warning that if you're watching this video, you may want to slow down the time, or if you're pressed for time and you're watching on two times speed, just be aware that some of this will seem really fast as I go over the content. Alright, let's dive into the format. The test is three hours long. It is in two parts. Part one and part two, they are both 90 minutes. Part one is multiple choice questions. There are 60 of them. Part two is six questions. Those are the free response questions. Both sections are weighted equally, so 50% of your grade comes from part one and 50% of your grade comes from part two. Remember, there are two long and four short biology FRQs, each testing different sets of science practices and skills. And the multiple choice questions can come individually or as sets with a stimulus. On the day of the exam, you should bring two pens, blue or black ink, two number two pencils and a calculator. College Board has a list of the approved ones. It's pretty much any calculator, as long as it doesn't connect to the internet. You will be provided with a formula sheet from the College Board and then some extra paper if you need it to continue writing your free responses. If you don't go to the school where you're taking the exam, make sure you bring a school ID or a government ID like a driver's license so people can identify you on the day of the test. Do not bring cell phones or smartwatches or tablets or cameras. They will either be confiscated or you will be removed from the testing area. On the free response questions, be prepared for two long questions and four short ones. The two long ones are more points, but all of them are important to try to answer. I'll go through some other tips throughout this video, but one of the most important ones, a lot of teachers say, is ATP for answer the prompt. So make sure you answer what the question is asking, no less, no more. As far as the topics that are going to show up on the AP Biology exam, here they are and their percentage breakdowns. They're all treated with about similar weights on the exam, but natural selection does show a little bit more than some of the other units. So make sure that you review topics related to natural selection, evolution as much as you can. Some general tips for the multiple choice questions is to answer all the questions. If you're not sure and you're out of time, just go ahead and put a random guess. You're not going to get penalized for the wrong answer. You just won't get points for the correct one. A good strategy is to skim the questions first, then to read the stem or the stimulus. That's their little reading part above the question. Some questions have longer paragraphs than others and there are some questions with an experimental description or a diagram and then a set of questions that follow. So it's a good idea to skim what you're going to be asked, then to do the reading and look carefully for the answers that the questions are asking you about. Next, give yourself about one minute per question. Some of these you may answer much faster, but that's okay. That's time in the bank. Remember, this is a 90-minute question period, so if you do 60 questions, one per minute, that leaves you about 30 minutes at the end to review your answers or to go back over tricky questions that you might've been stuck on earlier. But keep moving forward and try to answer all the questions. If not all, then as many as you can. For the FRQs or free response questions, some general tips are to write incomplete sentences. Avoid bullet points, lists, outlines and drawings unless they ask you to draw in a specific space on the test or to make a graph. Do not obsess over having perfect grammar or spelling. Points are not counted off for spelling errors or poor sentence structure. You do need to be coherent. You do need to write legibly, but it doesn't have to be a perfect English essay. The long FRQs do count for more points, so you want to make sure you spend extra time on those. And you can avoid lengthy explanations. Words like thus. Other words you can avoid are things like love, prove and any absolutes, saying things like always or never. Lastly, if you are asked to round on any of your calculations, be sure you know what the place values are. So if you're asked to round to the 10th place, know that that's one number after the decimal. Okay, let's dive into some hot topics and content review. These are things or themes that come up frequently and we're going to do these in no particular order. So hopefully, these are all things that you've covered so far in your class this year. Let's get started. Let's start with the basic unit of life itself, cells. All cells are surrounded by a cell membrane, a phospholipid bilayer. They all contain genetic information, mostly DNA, and they all contain cytoplasm. All living things have a genome and a genome is the entire set of genetic material or all the biological instructions for one organism. Remember that different units that code for different proteins in DNA are called genes. Remember that genes code for specific proteins which give cells and organisms their traits. But different parts of the genetic instructions are used in different types of cells, so not every cell in a multicellular organism expresses the exact same DNA. So for example, we have neurons and skin cells and red blood cells and they're all going to look a little bit different from each other because they have expressed different sections of the DNA. Signal transduction pathways. Now, this was a topic that was really heavily missed on last year's exam. So you want to make sure you know that a signal transduction pathway involves a signal, transduction and a response. These pathways are highly specific and regulated. One signal molecule can cause a cascade effect, releasing thousands of molecules in a cell so that amplification can happen when one single molecule then sets off potentially 10 others. And these pathways could have evolved from a common ancestor millions of years ago. Remember, the result of a signal transduction pathway could be something like gene expression, the production of a hormone, suppression of a genetic activity, or even apoptosis, programmed cell death. So let's take a look at this diagram right here. This is a simple depiction of a signal transduction pathway. We have a hormone or a ligand binding to our receptor to start the signal transduction pathway in signal reception. And then we have the cascade that is going to amplify the signal from the membrane to other affectors within the cell. And then finally, within the nucleus, we see that the final part of this pathway is where our target genes are reached and we have our response. Something maybe is turned on, a gene is stimulated or something is repressed, maybe a gene is turned off. Hopefully, you remember a little bit about protein synthesis where the enzyme RNA polymerase is going to synthesize mRNA molecules in the five to three prime direction by reading the template DNA strand in the three to five prime direction. So we have our RNA polymerase synthesizing that molecule, the mRNA leaving the nucleus and then undergoing certain modifications, which we'll get into a little bit later. And then in the cytosol at the ribosome, we have our tRNA bringing around our amino acids and it recognizes each codon with an anticodon on the tRNA and that amino acid chain is built from the mRNA transcript. In prokaryotic organisms, this happens all at once. Transcription is coupled to translation, but in eukaryotic organisms, we have this occurring in our different locations. Once we have our amino acid sequence, we can undergo even more protein modifications to get the final functional protein. Now again, there's lots of regulation of genes and transcription and translation. Some types of gene regulation in prokaryotic organisms include operons. Let's start with inducible operon. In its usual state, we do not have transcription happening. That's mostly because we have a repressor here that's bound to a section called the operator in this operon. Now, the purpose of these genes, lacZ, lacY and lacA, is to provide instructions for the cell to build parts of proteins to digest lactose. If there's no lactose in the cell, these genes don't need to be turned on because we don't need any enzyme to digest lactose. But when lactose does show up, a version of it, alalactose, can bind to the repressor, removing it from the operator. This allows RNA polymerase to move down the operon and transcription can occur. Once transcription occurs, we have the lacmRNA, which can then later be transcribed into a protein that can digest the lactose. Once that lactose is all gone, it no longer binds the repressor, which means it's back on the operator and we cannot have transcription any longer. Now, there are many levels of gene expression and regulation in eukaryotic organisms and there's many points at which the transcripts can be changed or modified along the way to becoming active proteins. There's even pre-transcriptional regulation that can occur. A big one to know is part of RNA processing where we have introns and exons. Our non-coding sequences are introns and then those are later removed so that we only have exons in our final mRNA transcript. With alternative splicing, we can get multiple versions of mRNA from the same original gene. Be sure you know the basics of what PCR is, gel electrophoresis is, DNA sequencing and then bacterial transformation. You won't have to detail step by step how these occur or the laboratory procedures for these, but you should know the purpose. For example, PCR is the amplification of DNA to make lots and lots of copies from a small bit. Gel electrophoresis is the separation of our DNA molecules based on size so that we can see any patterns after they're cut with restriction enzymes. This is useful for evolutionary analysis, as a step in genetic transformation, or for forensics and crime scene analysis. Bacterial transformation or genetic transformation involves the removal of a gene of interest from a particular organism, inserting it into a plasmid so that our gene of interest can then be taken up by our organism that will later go and express that gene as a protein. Make sure you know the four main categories of biological macromolecules, nucleic acids, proteins, carbohydrates and lipids. Know their monomers, the structure of their monomers. The nucleic acids are made of nucleotides. Proteins are made of amino acids. Carbohydrates are made of monosaccharides and lipids are made of fatty acids and glycerols. Focusing really quickly on proteins here, we know that proteins are chains of amino acids. They're drawn very simply here in the pink, but then we can also see the 3D molecular models. Proteins can have thousands of amino acids and be very complicated with their different folding patterns, including active sites that may interact with different molecules. Now remember, the changing shape of a protein may cause it to become inactive. So for example, if we have a phosphate group that is added to the protein, that charged phosphate group could change the structure and shape of the protein, which would then change its ability to interact with other molecules and maybe change its function or make it inactive. One of my favorite ways to remember all the steps of cellular respiration is going crazy can offer purpose and that stands for glycolysis, the Krebs cycle and oxidative phosphorylation. Now, it's important to remember the location of all these different steps. So glycolysis happens in the cytosol outside the mitochondria. The citric acid or the Krebs cycle happens within the mitochondrial matrix. And then finally, we have our electron transport chain, which is positioned across the inner mitochondrial membrane in order to establish a proton gradient and then this provides energy for oxidative phosphorylation. So in this process of cellular respiration and ATP synthesis, remember that oxygen is our final electronic receptor at the end of the process. And of course, cellular respiration and photosynthesis are highly connected, especially with the cycling of carbon in the biosphere. Remember, photosynthesis removes carbon dioxide from the atmosphere and fixes that carbon into organic molecules or sugars. Remember, photosynthesis takes place in chloroplast and we think that the very first chloroplasts were actually prokaryotic organisms that performed photosynthetic-like pathways and that they were engulfed by larger single cellular organisms who, after a very long time, formed a symbiotic relationship together and developed into the chloroplast that we know today. This is part of the theory of endosymbiosis and some of the evidence pieces that point to this are the double membrane that surrounds the chloroplast and the fact that the chloroplast itself has its own DNA. Alright, let's get to the good stuff. There's two main parts of photosynthesis that we're going to study at the AP Biology level. We have the light dependent or the light reactions of photosynthesis and we have the dark or carbon fixation reactions. Now remember, all of this is taking place within the chloroplast and the space in the chloroplast is called the stroma. But then there's also a third membrane, this thylakoid membrane, and these membranes are going to be able to provide us with concentration gradients for some really essential parts of the process to happen. Now, the light dependent reactions are dependent on light and so sunlight is going to be absorbed by chlorophyll pigments at first. And water, one of our main ingredients for photosynthesis, is going to enter here. Now, we have complexes of proteins and pigments called photosystems and these photosystems, photosystem 2 and photosystem 1, are basically there to split the water and pass electrons down an electron transport chain, very similar to the electron transport chain that we see in cellular respiration. But in this electron transport chain, the final electronic receptor is NADP+ which will yield NADPH, a very important ingredient for the next part of photosynthesis. This process also is going to generate a proton gradient and we also have ATP synthase here, just like we have in cellular respiration. And so ATP synthase will generate ATP and that ATP will also help with the next part of photosynthesis. So again, those light reactions take place within the thylakoid or across the membranes of the thylakoid. They involve protein complexes called photosystem 2 and photosystem 1. Water goes in here, water is split here and oxygen comes out of that splitting of the water. So all of the oxygen on Earth actually comes from the light reactions of photosynthesis here. In AP Biology, you do not need to memorize all the steps in this electron transport chain or the finer details of it. These are the main components you will need to know about this part of the process. Your teacher may go into more detail about the different protein complexes or what's happening with the electrons here. But it's really important to know that at the end of the light dependent reactions, we have ATP and NADPH to power the dark reactions or the carbon fixation reactions that happen outside the thylakoid in the stroma of the chloroplast. These reactions are part of a cycle called the Calvin cycle. And in the Calvin cycle, carbon dioxide enters and eventually with the help of ATP and NADPH, sugars are produced. In AP Biology, you do not need to memorize the steps of the Calvin cycle, but you do need to know what goes in and what comes out of it. Now, these sugars are not going to be glucose immediately after the Calvin cycle. In fact, it takes a couple more turns of the Calvin cycle and a few more steps to get to glucose, but you can say sugars, organic compounds are generated here. These sugars do contain carbon, which comes directly from carbon dioxide that enters the carbon cycle.
Organisms use feedback loops to maintain their internal environments and respond to internal and external changes. Feedback loops help organisms regulate homeostasis and the failure to maintain homeostasis can cause disease or death. Negative feedback loops are very common in organisms. These are going to result in the slowing of a process or getting something back to a set point. So for example, blood pressure, blood sugar regulation, temperature regulation so that the body can return to the levels at which it needs. Positive feedback loops are an amplification of a particular output or signal. It's going away from homeostasis. So for example, increased contractions during childbirth, the production of milk in mammals, or even the ripening of fruit.
Some common topics and themes that show up related to molecules and molecular biology. Enzymes at high temperatures will unfold or denature or lose their shape and lose then their function. So remember, an increase in temperature above the optimum range for the enzyme can definitely alter the shape of the active site and reduce a reaction rate. Water has a lot of very special properties such as high heat of vaporization, the fact that it's polar, surface tension, just to name a few. This can relate back to a lot of reactions and processes within our bodies and cells, including homeostasis. For example, that high heat of vaporization is involved with sweat because the water and sweat absorbs a large quantity of heat during that liquid to gas phase change, which is going to lower body temperature and bring us back to the temperature that our body needs to be. You definitely want to be able to recognize how different molecules are going to be able to cross the membrane. For example, small non-polar molecules like carbon dioxide and oxygen can freely pass through membranes. So speaking of membranes, cells have membranes that allow them to establish and maintain internal environments that are going to be different from their external environments. And then we have internal membranes that are going to help with different cellular processes and it minimizes different interactions that are going to be competing within the cell and increases our surface areas where our reactions can occur. And we can also use this as evidence for the endosymbiosis hypothesis. But all of these themes are important when we talk about organelles. Now, these are the organelles that you really should be able to know, recognize and understand how their functions work for AP Biology. There's a lot of other organelles out there and some major ones that are not on this list, but not in the exam. These are the ones that might show up and you might be tested on. Out of this list, the most important ones you really need to know and recognize are cell membranes, mitochondria and chloroplasts. We're talking about cell membranes. Remember, these are very complex. They go beyond just a phospholipid bilayer. They have integral proteins that are embedded in the membrane for transport, cell surface reception, cell identification, other activities. They also have carbohydrates and cholesterol in the membrane. So be able to recognize how membranes are going to contribute to cell structure, function, communication, a lot of other themes and processes. Mitochondria and chloroplasts, of course, are going to show up when we talk about cellular energetics. We already talked about mitochondria and chloroplasts a little bit with endosymbiosis, but make sure you're very familiar with them, their role and their structure for both cellular respiration and photosynthesis. One thing to remember about mitochondria specifically is that mitochondria have their own DNA. This can often throw a loop in some patterns of inheritance. We'll talk about those in a minute. So remember that unlike nuclear DNA, which can come from both parents, mitochondrial DNA is only inherited from the mother through maternal inheritance. If we look back at our organic compound structure, each nucleotide has a phosphate, a sugar and a base, ATG or C. And so when we put these together, As and Ts, we can see always pair together with these are little hydrogen bonds in the middle. Gs and Cs always pair together and the backbone of the DNA molecule is made of phosphate and sugar molecules. And to contrast it, RNA is single-sided. It does have structural similarities to DNA. It still has a sugar, a phosphate group, our nitrogenous base, but RNA has urocell, DNA has thymine. DNA obviously is double-stranded and DNA usually is just staying put in the nucleus in eukaryotic organisms, whereas RNA is going to leave the nucleus to perform the other steps of protein synthesis. Another hot topic is the cell cycle and checkpoints. There's a number of internal controls or checkpoints that are going to regulate progression through the cell cycle. You don't need to know specific cyclindependent kinase pairs or specific growth factors, but do know that if something is wrong or if there is an error detected within the cell cycle, typically the cell will commit apoptosis, again, programmed cell death. But errors in that cycle or errors in recognizing those steps could also lead to uncontrolled cell growth, disease like cancer, or we have uncontrolled cell division or unregulated cell division. Now, speaking of cell division and reproduction, mitosis is going to produce two genetically identical daughter cells. Make sure you review different types of reproduction. Miosis is going to produce cells with half the normal amount of genetic material, generally going from diploid to haploid cells and these are gametes or sex cells. There's a lot of different steps that contribute to genetic diversity. First of all, we have independent assortment where we have a lot of different possibilities of orientations of how the chromosomes could line up. There's random fertilization, which again happens after, but we need to be able to create these haploids to be fertilized beforehand. And then during crossing over, we can have a bunch of different combinations of information. Familiarize yourself with errors or consequences if some steps in the process of miosis go wrong. Make sure to review cell transport situations while water move by osmosis from areas of high water potential to areas of low water potential. This is probably going to be recognizing where water would move within a certain situation is probably more likely to show up on the exam than an actual water potential problem. As far as genetics goes, inheritance patterns that might show up include single gene or mono hybrid inheritance. Dihybrid inheritance is a possibility as well where we're tracking two genes. Sex-linked inheritance where we have a trait, generally it's going to be an X-linked, sex-linked trait that we're tracking. Remember, males only need one copy of those in order to display the trait. Females need two if it's recessive. We can talk about genetically linked inheritance. These are when two genes are close together on chromosomes. So typically, they're inherited together. And then inheritance of things like traits in mitochondrial DNA. Remember, your mitochondria is going to come from the egg or the ovum and so that is going to be inherited from the mother. As far as the ecology and the environment, there's a lot of related topics that could show up on the exams. A very common one is environmental impacts on molecular functions or environmental impacts on gene expression. So recognize how certain genes can be turned on or off or have extra expression due to certain environmental factors. Environmental pressures can also strongly influence natural selection, so make sure you connect those ideas. And then of course, population interactions like symbiotic relationships, predation and lots of community ecology topics could show up here and there. One last thing to add is that biodiversity or increased biodiversity in an ecosystem will increase resilience of that ecosystem. So if there's any disruption like a disease, the more likely area is to recover than a less biodiverse ecosystem. We know that organisms have different strategies for regulating body temperature, so a type of homeostasis. Two main ones are endotherms and ectotherms where endotherms use their metabolism, so thermal energy from their metabolism to generate the warmth that helps them maintain homeostasis to the temperature that they need to be. Ectotherms though are dependent on the environment, so they can regulate their temperatures through behaviors like moving into the sun or moving into the shade, right? Like lizards here sitting on a rock, which can help them regulate their internal body temperatures. And when we talk about energy availability, typically smaller organisms have higher metabolic rates. They have higher energy needs. So something like a fly or a small rodent is going to have a higher metabolic rate than a larger organism like a cow, for example. And in general, obviously organisms consume other organisms to gain energy and a net gain of energy is going to result in growth for the organism and storage of energy and overall survival. A net loss of energy, we get a loss of mass of the organism and then later death for the organism. This is a typical trophic or energy pyramid that you might see in a diagram for AP Biology. There's different types of pyramids too, like pyramids of biomass and pyramids of numbers. But here, what we're looking at are these different trophic levels or levels that organisms feed at. And we want to keep in mind that at every level, we have a significant amount of energy lost. So it is inefficient. We have about a 90% energy lost every single time we go up a trophic level. We often talk about core features that are conserved across all domains of life and currently scientists organize life into three main domains, bacteria, archaea and eukaryota. You're probably most familiar with the eukaryotic organisms, which are then further organized into kingdoms. Now, when we establish these groups or relationships between different organisms, we can organize them in different ways. One way to display how organisms are related is through a diagram called a phylogenetic tree or a cladogram. And these can be drawn in many different ways, but it's a model that helps us visualize relationships between organisms and we can see different branching lines in different directions for how groups have evolved or how they're related. And so a group is typically at the end of a branch and we can work backwards to see where a common ancestor might've existed between two different organisms or two different organismal groups. We also might see hash marks or these lines here representing different traits that have evolved at different times within evolutionary history. So anything that comes after a particular trait means it has it. So if we're here with seeds, it means that anything that comes after the seeds mark, like pine trees and flowering plants, have seeds as a characteristic. Now, we can use other biochemical evidence to help us determine which proteins in DNA are similar in different organisms. This helps us construct our tree of life and gathers more evidence for evolution, helps us figure out how different organisms are related to each other. We can also use embryonic development, fossil evidence or morphology or different physical characteristics to determine which organisms might be related and where they came from. We know that Earth's present day species developed from earlier distinct species. When we get new combinations of existing genes or mutations in genes and these are inherited, they can be passed on to offspring and we can see variations in populations. Over time, organisms that are better adapted to their environment are more likely to survive and reproduce and pass on their genes to the next generation. For example, if we have a population of bacteria and some of those bacteria are naturally resistant to antibiotics, we treat that population with antibiotics, only the ones with the resistance will survive. Then that gives way to give the opportunity to the resistant bacteria to survive and reproduce and pass on the resistant gene to their offspring. What we've done here is created an antibiotic resistant population. The resistant bacteria were more fit and they have survived and reproduced at a greater rate than non-resistant bacteria. In anything we talk about with evolution is that there is variation within populations. Now, we can get genetic variation in a population through a variety of ways. We've got mutation, genetic drift and sexual selection, as well as artificial selection. Remember that evolution is the change in the genetic makeup in a population over time, not just the changing of one organism. Individuals don't evolve, populations evolve. So humans can impact the diversity within a population, either making it more diverse, less diverse, or favoring a certain trait for our benefit. The way we do this is by controlling which organisms reproduce. Certain traits in cows, for example, milk yield and milk production over the years has increased in certain dairy cows because we select the ones that produce the most milk and choose those to go on and breed to produce more for the production of more milk. Also going to mention convergent evolution, which is not always a type of artificial selection. In fact, it's its own type of evolution. This is when we see some similar selective pressures that lead to similar phenotypes in very different populations or different organisms. One of the most commonly used examples of this is how birds and bats both evolved flight separately and independently. What happens is that environmental pressures are going to cause certain traits to be more favorable within a population and then those individuals will survive and reproduce. So we could see this in body plans of certain species. We could see this in drug resistance in certain pathogens. Again, that's human action because we've created those drugs. We've seen this in antifreeze proteins in particular fish, both in the Arctic and in the Antarctic. Two different species, two different locations, but similar selective environmental pressures are going to produce a similar type of protein for these fish to survive. Well, Hardy Weinberg is actually an equation that we can use to determine the frequency of alleles in a population at a given time. Hardy Weinberg is used as a model for describing and predicting allelic frequencies in non-evolving populations. Remember, it represents ideal populations that aren't changing and since natural populations do change, Hardy Weinberg provides us with a baseline to gauge that degree of change. Now, there's two equations you're going to need to know in order to do Hardy Weinberg problems. So these are provided to you on the formula sheet that you'll get for the AP Biology exam, so there's no need to memorize them. So P is going to equal the frequency of the dominant allele in a population. Sometimes we represent that with a capital letter, like big A. Next up, Q is going to represent the frequency of the recessive allele in a population. So for example, little a. P squared is the frequency of homozygous dominant genotypes in the population. So for example, big A, big A. 2PQ is going to be the frequency of the heterozygous genotype in the population. So big A, little a. And then you guessed it, Q squared is going to represent the frequency of the homozygous recessive genotype in a population. Remember, these are the things that are measured and how we take our data in the experiment. Independent variables are the things that are changed, tested or manipulated. Think I, the experimenter, what am I changing for the independent variable? And D, what am I measuring for my data for the dependent variable? When it's asking you to make a prediction, make sure you state something specific. Don't just say, I think this variable will change or I think there will be a difference. You do want to make sure that you include whether it's an increase, a decrease, death, growth, whatever. But you don't need to include your justification unless it asks you to justify, which it probably will on a particular step of the FRQ. But answer what the question is asking. Don't do more, don't do less. Now, you will have to create some sort of graph on the AP Biology exam. Make sure you choose the most appropriate graph to explain your data. I do have a whole video on that if you'd like to check it out. Line graphs usually show a change over time. Bar graphs usually display the comparison of different categories. You might have to draw scatter plot as well. It is unlikely you would have to create a pie chart for the AP Bio exam. More than likely, you'll probably have to create a line or a bar graph. Just make sure you choose the appropriate one for the exam. Remember, if error bars are not overlapping, there is a statistically significant difference between the values, which means our experimenter's can consider the measured values as not the same. But if the error bars are overlapping at any point, then we can probably say there is not a statistically significant difference between the values and probably not a statistically significant difference in the data. As far as the math, there are some equations on your formula sheet that you probably shouldn't waste too much time on because it's not likely they'll show up on the exam and that's standard deviation, standard error than mean, surface area equations and pH equations. They are on the formula sheet, but it's not likely you'll see them on the test. Equations you should be familiar with are things like the Chi square, the Hardy Weinberg equations, water potential, population growth and carrying capacity, and maybe Simpson's diversity index. I do have a longer video going through examples of each of these, so be sure to check that out if you're interested in doing a fast AP Biology math review. But really quickly, I wanted to highlight Chi square because this is something that a lot of students get stressed out about. It is used in science to test if data that you observe from an experiment is the same as the data that you would expect to come or predict from the experiment. What's really important in Chi square is to know how to do it and how to interpret the results. Sometimes you'll use this in a genetics problem and if you're using it in a genetics problem, you'll probably state a null hypothesis, something like the data are consistent with the something like the data are consistent with the predicted method of inheritance. You calculate your Chi square value, and then you make sure you know your degrees of freedom, which is the number of categories total minus one. In this particular case, if we're looking at colors, we have one, two, three, four, five, six colors minus one, that would be five degrees of freedom. After we got our Chi square value, we would look at that on our critical value table, and we would see if our Chi square value was greater than the critical value in the chart. Please go back and check out my Chi square video or my AP Biology math video if you want to see a full example of this. Here are some examples of null hypotheses, which you might need to be able to state. Again, if you're talking about a null hypothesis in genetics, you would say something like the data are consistent with the predicted method of inheritance. If you reject a null hypothesis, that means that there is some difference in the data in the experiment and that the variables did have an effect on the particular outcome of the experiment. Okay, so I have lots of other AP Biology resources, study plans, stats practice, even some FRQ tips on this channel. So if you're taking the exam this year and you have some extra time to prep, be sure to watch those videos so you're totally prepared for the exam format, test content, and all the tips and tricks students need to be successful on the AP Biology test. Good luck on your exams. Thanks so much for watching. Give this video a like if it's been helpful, and I'll see you later.